No, I probably never asked. They said they...
Well, this was the spring.
They said they had inquiries.
Freaking out, he's going to be on the...
Right?
The pack.
Time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of 26th October 2021 is called to order. Ask those in our council chambers if you have not signed in, you sign in on the clipboard by the back door. And everyone, please put their cell phones on vibrate. I will call members. Daniel?
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilwoman Kevin Dalich.
Here.
Councilwoman Kurt Markram.
Here.
Councilmembers Steve Foss, and Mayor Brad Frigus.
Here. Glad to welcome each and every one of you this evening to our city council meeting, those in the council chamber, also those that are joining us on Zoom technology. And remember, our council meetings are shown on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. Just three announcements for the next couple of weeks. This week, or excuse me, this Sunday, October 31st is Halloween, so you may see a lot of circus singers around town. Sunday, November 2nd, 2 AM, daylight savings time begins. And on Tuesday, November 9th, 4:30 PM is our next city council meeting here at the council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Here and now, if you all please stand to the legislative room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here with citizens' comments? Seeing none. Item number three is additions, deletions to our agenda. Any additions or deletions? Any additions or deletions? Hearing none is our motion to... Accept the agenda. Move second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent consent agenda. I would like to pull item number four, C1, that's a liquor store report. I'll read the other items. Four, A is approval of council minutes of September 28, 2021, council minutes of October 1st, 2021, and October 12th, 2021. Four B is approval of council table listing. Item four, C2, is utility report, which is in your packet. Item fours, D is Duntonship, Dunville Alliance gambling permit, 26 Northwest First Avenue, and that's on November 30th. Item number four, E, is two bullet points there, 421 Southeast First Street, amount of $150, 601 North Broadway, amount of $100. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Then let's go to item number four, C1. We have a liquor store report, and we have Maggie with us here this evening. I think she has something to present to us. You should have a handout in front of you on your desk.
All right, thank you. I guess what I'm presenting for you tonight is installment of some new cameras with the addition of extras along the north, south, and one more on the back loading area of the liquor store. We have been struggling with our cameras recently due to some things that happened at the liquor store. We've found that we seriously need to upgrade what we have because it's outdated. So I got ahold of Luke Sherbrooke, and he gave me a quote for the additions. And I've presented those with you tonight, if you have any questions about that.
Maggie, when you say struggling, you're talking about the kind of luck of time, or...
Whenever we have things happen at the liquor store and officers, chief statem is called down there, and they want to see our cameras. When it's live, you can see very well what's going on. When we go back, the images are too blurry to pick out anything. I mean, I couldn't even tell you if it was one of my workers standing outside in the daytime if I had to go back and look at it.
And how do you know something happened? I don't know. Like, give me a chance.
Well, my front window was broken last week. What do you mean? How do I know something has happened?
Yeah, I mean, okay, I heard about that. But like, within a store, how do you know?
Oh, because of how we walk the store and run the store, we know where things are. And if something is missing from here, we can go backtrack to where we know it was, when it was, and we can watch and see what happened. But to tell who it was...
And the camera hasn't been updated since construction?
Correct.
And prosecuting death or murder?
I'm not, that's not me.
But that, I mean, that, that doesn't work very well, does it? I mean, I...
It does if you have good imagery, but I don't know. I could say that.
Yeah, I mean, with the way the court's been treating us here, I don't know.
Well, that, that we can. We can get quality, quality imagery to the police department to do their job and report their report, not the police department.
No, assuming there's $8,089 in the liquor store fund that can be used for their own cameras. Do we need to get more than one both, or is this okay?
One.
I'm going to need to approve the vote by an prosecutor, what do you think of that?
A second, ma'am.
Motion second, discussion, discussion.
One thing, and I'm changing the subject here a little bit, but I've noticed you have your half pints behind the counter.
Correct.
As they should be, because old BB just decayed.
Correct.
Or steal, I'm gonna use that word, steal. How about smaller ones like the pint bottles?
Also behind the counter. That's also where we keep our high-end bottles, is I will only put out one, and they go behind the counter as well.
Okay. How much of a problem have you had with...
Since I moved the bigger bottles behind the counter, not as much with the high-end items. I still have things, in the wintertime, when everybody's dressed in all of their coveralls and whatnot, I've had people come in and... Yes, I can watch this person on the camera stuff the large bottles of brandy into their overalls. But we can't do it. We have no idea who the people are with the cameras. But we can say that, yes, this was stolen, this, right here, they're stealing it. But that's the best I can tell you.
All right. Hopefully with this, it looks like a pretty BB megapixel system, so you should be able to identify at quite a distance.
Do you have an idea of how much, like, per year, what your losses for something?
It's not $8,000. I would say it's probably more like $400 or $500. It depends on, I know the other year, we got hit all at one time for almost $100 worth of stuff, just in one failed blow.
Yeah, my only question was, now, this isn't an addition, this is taking, totally replacing the system that she has. So she won't be, he might be using some existing wiring and that type of thing, but we're taking, totally getting rid of that camera system, some cameras, and putting better ones in. But my question is, how can I get Jeff about, about the breaking that happened? I guess it's more a question, it's really clear, obvious that somebody could wa, be in the store shopping and see that there's some product stored in front of the window, even though they could see it from the outside. But have you, are you still planning on storing stuff in front of that window? Or are you relocating it? There's no, I guess, incentive or whatever for somebody to break the window and grab bottles right next to the window?
That will be moved when we get the new window put in place. But it wasn't just a window. I mean, we had, we had a neon light hanging in that window. These things were on a metal rack in that window. It wasn't just sitting there.
Right, right, I understand. But knowing that all of somebody figured out, all we have to do is break that window, and there's products right there we can take without even going in the store. I guess my point is, does, is it smart in the future, knowing what just happened, and it's only happened once and all the years it's been there, but to continue to store product in front of the window like that?
I, I plan on moving it, and it wasn't necessarily stored there. It was a display of a few bottles. It was put up as a red, white, and blue display, and we had been in the process of taking it down.
Do you, I have a question too, back to the cameras, since the, are all the cameras, additional cameras going in, as a lot of you mentioned?
On the outside of the building, because right now, we have nothing on the north or south end, and then the blind spot in the back alley.
So long as we improve the dead spots, you'll have dead spots unless you put in a hundred cameras.
And Luke said the only issue he had with the ones that I was requesting outside was the one on the north end because of the trees, the shrubs that are planted out there. He said you might have to trim those down.
Well, that's good. I just wanted to make sure that we were adding any of the dead spots that you are obviously aware of.
Any more questions?
I have another question.
Go ahead.
I'll be done with this and that and stuff?
We got a whole, yeah, whole way in. Any more questions on the cameras? Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. We got one more motion. We gotta approve liquor store report that was in our packet. So motion to approve, second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried, Councilwoman Strand.
Last summer, someone told me that Pelican doesn't get free bags of ice from the booths, is that? But they said other stores, they can go and get a free bag of ice. I said, well, that sounds, you see your office? Is that, I don't want any more liquor stores.
I can say from experience, I've owned a lot of liquor stores, but I've never got a free bag of ice since my birthday. And now it lies, go in, in other towns.
Well, that's, you mentioned like Seven Sisters and...
That's exactly the store that's off in the world, unless they just, you're gonna give it to me. I ask for it, they ring it up, and I grab it on the way home.
I'll go back to my source, sorry.
In the rare events that I shop on.
Anything else, Maggie?
I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did. We did approve the consent agenda. We approve the consent. Item number six, Project 89 assessment, we have a lot of sleep, and we're just here this evening. He's gonna present, actually, he's hearing two different agenda items. Item number six is a perfect course, and he's got two motions, the resolutions he's gonna present to us. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, tonight I'm gonna talk about moving ahead with the assessment procedure for two projects. The first is Project 89, and what Project 89 is, is that's the improvements that were done out near the, it was called the Colony Apartment Complex Project. So the new, the new apartment complex or apartment building that was built out on West 108. We installed some utility improvements, some street improvements, curb and gutter, a small amount of storm sewer improvements to accommodate that development. And in, in that process, there were some other properties that were benefited as well. So I provided an outline, hopefully it's in everybody's packet. Just a little background on the project. Construction has substantially been completed. We are actually, I think, through the closeout process with the contractor. So when we bid this project, we, we obtained construction bids the second time, if a lot of you recall. The actual estimated project budget was about $767,000. Now, that did include some contingency monies that we typically put in. Once we got all said and done, the final project cost came in at $754,000. So it came in under budget from what we had originally anticipated. We've done all the preliminary assessment hearings and things like that, so at that, this point now, we can move ahead and actually proceed with the final assessment procedures. So a few things that need to happen in order to do that. A couple resolutions need to be passed. They're both in your packet this evening. The first one is a resolution declaring cost to be assessed in order in preparation of proposed assessments. The second one is actually a resolution for hearing on improvement. So the first one basically just declares that, hey, this is the amount that we're gonna assess. This is the amount that's gonna be the city's portion. There's some terms in there and things like that. And then the second one is actually setting the assessment hearing date and time. So a couple things that I want to note on this project. The total amount that is to be assessed out of the $754,000 is actually $60,636.47. So it's a pretty minor amount, given the total project cost. The proposed assessment terms have been 15 years with a 1% interest rate. And this 2E is a little bit unique. So given the nature of the project, when we installed the utilities out there, we actually extended utility services, sanitary sewer and water services to properties that are currently, well, now they are, but were not served with city utilities prior to the project. They have a well, they have a septic system. So given that situation, what was proposed, when we did the original assessment hearing, is for just the service lateral connections, it's been proposed to actually defer the assessments until one of three things happens. The service lateral is connected to, the property is sold, or ownership of the property changes, and the third one is seven years passes. So basically, what happens is that those property owners can continue to use their well, their septic, until one of those three things happens. Obviously, the last thing being, if nothing else happens after seven years, then the assessments would kick in. The interest would be deferred throughout that time until the assessments actually do kick in. So that's a little bit unique for this project, just given the, the nature of the work that was done out there and why the work was done. So with that being said, moving on, what we've proposed to do is actually set up an assessment hearing for November 30th, which is at your regularly scheduled council meeting, for 5:30 PM. And then we will have to send out a notice to each individual property owner that's affected or to be assessed, and then a notice would have to go in the paper as well. Any questions on that? Steve?
Do the property owners already know about this?
They do. We actually, I think, Don and myself made an effort when we were in the planning stages of this project, or the design stages, to go out, and we actually visited with each individual property owner. We also did have an assessment, it's called a public hearing, that happens before the project actually gets constructed. So yes, all the property owners should know about it. They got notices to come to the public hearing, and again, we made an effort to visit with them, so, yep.
Can I ask how was the reception today?
Actually, I think, I think they received it very well, considering that if it's three property owners, five parcels. And at that time, you know, kind of basing it off of estimated construction costs, we were able to kind of give them an idea of roughly what them assessments would be. And they were all, didn't really have a problem with it, knowing that, that they were gonna have city law and sewer, they liked that idea. But they also, I think, one of the, probably every one of them, the question was, well, do we have to hook up to it? And we told them, based on our policy and what we've done in the past and ordinances, they don't have to hook up to it until such a time as a well or a septic has to be replaced, and that is readily available to them, so then they would. So we explained that process. The other thing too, that was kind of unique about this is, is how to, you know, what the assessment amount would be. And we did give them kind of a ballpark figure, and we were basing that off of the uniqueness of this project and the fact that there was only five property, three property owners. Instead of going with new construction type of assessing it, like you would if there was, you know, a dozen, two dozen parcels, we just kind of looked at this as what was a reasonable amount, and we'll talk a lot about that when we get to the final assessment hearing. But what was, what's a reasonable, reasonable amount, and that's, that's the amount, the dollar amount that we talked to them about. And actually, at the end of the day, now, looking back at, at what we were talking to them about, and what the final total assessment amount is gonna be, it's actually less. So it's what we talked them about early on, and what they're actually gonna be assessed, for the most part, is download, and it's not listening to their comments. None of them hooked up to it, just plain, they could, but they didn't.
Any other questions for Bob? If not, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-17, resolution defining cost to be assessed in order preparation of proposed assessment?
I'll move the adoption of 2021 day, 7:20.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Anything more on Resolution 2021-18, Bob?
Nope, that again is just a resolution for hearing on proposed assessment, and that actually sets the time and date. Hopefully, everybody's okay with, again, November 30th at 5:30. Is that too late? Do we want to go with 5? I figured 5:30, if people are working and they get off at 5, it would give them a chance to get here in time, but I, I'm proposing 5:30, but that's open for discussion.
Yeah, we thought, that's the one thing we thought about, with any property owners, we don't know, you know, it's, it's Martinson, Magnuson, and Harstek. And we didn't know specifically how their jobs would possibly prohibit them from getting here before 5:00, so we said, guys, we will just put lots of stuff on there. To keep you busy until 5:00.
Yep. And the language actually reads "at" or "about."
I'm going to adopt Resolution 2021-17.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number seven is Project 90 assessment. Again, two different resolutions. Bob, do you want to speak for them?
Correct, yeah. Same basically procedure for this project. This project was the Cassad 96 and 100 project. I actually included a map in the, in the, my agenda for this particular project. A little bit of background information, again, the as-bid project budget for that was just over $3 million, at $3,020,000. Right now, the estimated final project budget is about $2.688 million, so that came in under budget as well. Basically, the exact same things that we discussed are applied to this one, except for a few things. This one here is, the total amount proposed to be assessed is $263,244. The assessment terms for this one are a little bit different. This one here is being proposed to be assessed over 15 years with a 2% interest rate. And the reason that we went with 2% instead of 1 is the city is receiving financing for this project through the Public Facilities Authority. The financing that you're getting has a 1% interest rate attached to it, so a lot of times, communities will tack on an additional 1% to whatever the rate you're receiving. So that's why we're using 2% on this one instead of 1. Again, November 30th is the proposed hearing date. The time for that one is 5:45. So again, we're gonna publish it as "at" or "about," so we'll have, hopefully, both of those assessment hearings the same evening, one right after the other, so...
Motion to accept Resolution 2021-19?
The move.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion. Robert?
Which is Cassad 100, going behind the school?
Cassad 100 is the, the one by the school, and the reason, how I can remember is, we know that all the students at Pelican Rapids School give 100% all the time. So Cassad 100 is around the school, yes.
When does the city officially take ownership of that?
That's a good question. Now, Cassad 100, you were going to, you were going to...
County was gonna gift it to us.
Yes, has that paperwork been finalized?
I'd have to go back and look, but I'm thinking it was, it wasn't.
I think we did it, and then to get the project done, we had to rescind it.
I don't remember.
So I, I wasn't involved in some of that, so...
Eventually, we will have it.
Yeah.
Fourth Street.
It might be on the November 30th or...
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Name of the saying? Motion carried. Resolution 2021-20.
Yep, again, that's...
Motion second, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Anything else, Robert?
If there's nothing else for me, no, I have nothing else this evening, so, thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
I was gonna see if anybody was, Chamber of Commerce was gonna be here.
Ellie, you weren't here for that, are you, for the Light Horse Parade?
Um, what?
I thought Audrey White was there.
Well, I'm not yet to talk about it on behalf of Chamber of Commerce, but, uh, but, uh, but, uh, but, uh, Judy Tabit and I have been kind, kind of talking about that. You mind if I get my phone?
That's item number five, headed horse parade, which is scheduled for Friday evening, November 26th, the Friday after Thanksgiving, like we usually do. When Main Street is, there's no parking on Main Street between the two traffic signals. I believe that's all the area. Say again?
I'm not sure what you're trying to say.
Mayor, Zina Johnson's on Zoom. She's zooming in, and she raised her hand, so I can turn the topic...
Yeah, okay. Zina, Zina.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I don't know what Audrey was going to present tonight, but yes, the horse parade is at 6:30. We would like the, there'd be no parking between the stoplights again. The route has changed. Officer Statem has that, or Chief Statem has that map. Of course, I can't give it to you right now. I don't know if that's been presented or anything, or I... So I don't know if, when I request that there's no parking along that area, we may want to add to that if the council is agreeable. It does help, one, open up the streets so the horses don't get quite so spooked, and there really were no complaints two years ago when we did it. They, you know, people were glad that they could see better, they weren't looking around cars, stuff like that. So, and it starts at 6:30 on the 26th.
So we have used this route before?
No, we've modified the route just slightly.
Okay.
And to be honest, I haven't seen it. Well, okay, yes, I did, but I literally saw it, and somebody took it away, or, you know, it wasn't my copy to have. So I don't know exactly what the route is. I can meet, I meet with Audrey in the morning, and if you're at the moose tomorrow morning, also, I can always, you know, I can get you a copy, so...
Danielle raised her hand, I believe she knows.
Well, so Audrey just called, and she saw the meeting started at a different time, so she's on her way now.
Okay, then I'll let her, like, if you can table this until she gets there, because I, like I said, I don't know exactly what she was gonna present, so...
Okay, okay, thank you, Zina.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, let's recess this item. Ellie, did you have something else?
Oh, I... Oh, uh, yeah, so, uh, I know this is mostly in the Chamber of Commerce's wheelhouse, and I'm, I'm trying to talk to John Waller about, about it, that I just haven't been able to reach him yet, but, uh, so, so, uh, the merchants on the move in Pelican Rapids and, uh, and various vendors that served on the Pelican market would like to, to open up Pelican market in order to sell items during the horse parade. I mean, like I said, I know that's mostly in the Chamber of Commerce, but, but I just wanted to put the idea out there.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. John, how long a conversation got, item number 10, county garage consideration? You see something?
We can, you can do that. We need to change gears.
Item number 10, county garage consideration.
Just got to change gears.
There's a handout, you know, in your packet.
In your packet, I, is, is, uh, the same thing I'm kind of showing on the screen here, but the county basically wanted to know if the city is interested in, once they vacate that property right over here and move the county garage and the new one built out by the industrial park, if the city would be interested in purchasing it. And, um, you know, they have provided the council with a little bit of a description on it acreage, and the assessor's value of $108,000. It doesn't mean that that's necessarily what the city would pay for it, that's the assessed value. So they would kind of like to know, um, as soon as possible, it doesn't have to be a decision today, but if you don't, if you don't come up with a firm decision today, it'll probably be on the next council's agenda. They, um, uh, looks like the property would be available after November 2022, so it's nothing major that has to be decided today, just as soon as possible. Like they described, there was that garage right there, and then, and then three point, three and a half acres, this, this property is big enough, obviously, to hold, um, a couple of apartment buildings, actually, but, um... The one thing, that one thing that I, that I mentioned to Chuck Rady when I was talking to him, a little bit, well, we had an email exchange, um, and the one thing I asked him, and I haven't got a reply yet, is, are they going to be doing any soil testing on this to make sure they're selling a clean site? Because the last time we looked, it was a site that needs cleanup on it, so I don't know where that stands right now, but how would the city pay for it? I don't know. What, what would we do with it? I don't think, you know, what do you mean?
What, if we don't buy it, what happens?
Well, if you don't buy it, then I guess what the county will do, I believe, is they would, um, just put it up for a bid, and a private individual could buy it. If somebody, if somebody did purchase it, a private individual purchased it, great, it would go into tax rolls, um, eventually. The one thing is, this was a zone residential, and it was obviously grandfathered in from when the county, um, had the garage there, so it's zone residentially. The county, it has no conditional use permit on it or nothing, didn't need one, because it was grandfathered in, and they didn't expand the, the, the commercial use they were using. If somebody bought this and they wanted to use it for a commercial activity, they would have to get a conditional use permit to do that, before they could operate it that way. So if somebody wants to open a body shop, repair shop, whatever, they would have to come to the county commissioner, get a condition, a permit to do that.
And there must be one.
That's, yeah. At one point, and I, I don't know if this is a good location, I'd rather see this just to be developed residentially, honestly, uh, because there's a ton of space there, but just to throw this out there, with the salt and gravel shed that we've been, that the state has up on Highway 9, or a county, Highway 59, that the county has stuff in, we do, and, and the state does, and that, that facility up there is in really tough shape. And at some point, uh, it was actually, it was already to the point where, where the rim had damaged, um, the section of it that, that we were in, and, um, the state was saying they weren't going to repair it. If there needed to be any repairs up there, the city would have to do it themselves. What we ended up doing was just, we just moved all that material into another bin, and it works for us now. But I know Brian Olson and I have had conversations about, it doesn't make any sense if somebody can stop using that and having our salt and sand someplace else. There is no space in our existing area for our, by our shop, so we've thought about potentially that, if the state ever wanted to give that out, maybe look at that. This is another possible location, but I said, like I said, I don't necessarily refer, we wanted the county to get out of there, and, 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 um, hopefully, develop residentially somehow. In my opinion, nowadays with developers and everything else, if the city did acquire this property, something to think about, if we did acquire the property, would we ever recover that in, in trying to sell it to an investor who could, who could develop it? Because if you, seemingly, the way things work is, if you get someone that's interested in putting a housing or an apartment building in, in cities, small cities nowadays, the city has to participate to get it to happen anyway. Look at the apartment building along the way, they got tax evasion, the one, the other, the third got kicked. So I don't know, unless the city has a use board, or if they do want to develop it residentially, or have control over how it's developed, that would be the only reason the city would want to have it.
Actually, calling apartments on the way, this was the first site they looked at before they built there.
We, we would kind of have the control over how it was developed, because it would go back to residential zoning.
Correct, so you'd have, yeah, you, you would, and I, and I believe that's R2, so apartments or anything residential could go on there now.
Where is the water and sewer exit?
The water and sewer comes in, it's kind of shared with the line that goes to the, to the church.
Over to the...
Yeah, it doesn't come along Fifth, it, it's basically coming from behind, you know, kind of to the, comes in, I think, through the southwest section of that parcel. So through this area right here, I believe, is where it ends, and right through here. Because we had talked about potentially abandoning this, if we ever, you know, we've talked a couple times about bringing water and sewer down Fifth. If we had done, if we did that, looked at, basically, part of that project would be severing this and actually giving them another line, or leaving that there, but it'd be more, more beneficial to have it coming in from Fifth, if we could get to that point. Anyway, that's kind of where things stand, so, you know, if you guys don't see it done...
So if we purchase it for development, for apartment complex, we just serve as a middleman anyway, I'm proud to lose money on that provision.
And then, we don't know, it would probably have to be an agreement between what the purchase price ought to be worked out with the county and everything else, too, but, you know.
We don't have to make a decision now, and I would say just, uh, the county, or else it is, you have to agree.
If that's the issue.
The city must have been involved in it all. It might have been.
I agree. Yeah, because I don't see, I would, I would really not rather see us using this for city storage or part of the, you know, speak department or anything like that. We, we wanted them, hopefully, to get this out of there anyway, so we can hopefully develop residentially, so.
You feel we need more time to think about this, or you're ready to make a decision?
I agree that it's kind of too valuable to use the sand and salt storage, for sure. And like you said, you probably do it from underneath the end, but it's already sold for residential, would you like to see a residential? I'd say, I'd go.
Will we give a one more meeting?
Could we get feedback? Not in our queue, but could we request, um, what these soil tests are, or we...
Well, first, yeah, if I hear back, if you want to hear back, if they're about, if they're doing the soil testing, then I...
But they don't plan on doing that at this point.
I don't know, I don't know, that's what I asked.
Or they're still, they'd have to.
It's a federal, no. It just might come back to bite them, if, if somebody does acquire it, and it turns out that, um, something drives the need to have soil testing done, and then it's found to be a bad site, as far, contaminated site, then would the MPCA deal with the county who's tying it up, or the owner, or both? It's just, you get into that conversation.
Well, we want to do that, you know. They're not going to do anything with it till next year, I mean, we, we can wait till the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. But I know they want it, if we don't want it, I know they want to start looking at finding somebody to buy it, um, without waiting until next year, do that. We'd like to do it sooner rather than later, so they can get out of it, and somebody else can do it.
Have it on the agenda for the next week, take action this evening. Well, we'll go back to item number five, lighted horse parade. We have Audrey Waifall with us this evening, and, um, Dina, do you want to address the council here, Audrey? Dina Johnson was on Zoom, and she, she talked about some modification, but we're not exactly sure what that modification would be.
I don't either.
Just to the route.
Oh. Uh, do you have a route map?
No.
Okay. You will have one shortly here. And we are asking for downtown to be, like, two years ago, it was no parking between the two stoplights from 5:00 to 7:00.
We didn't have it last year?
No, COVID. So it was canceled.
Him on the... Sir, what's your account, your pass?
So I'm asking for that, tonight, your permission? Come on, Steve.
Can you explain it while we look at this? Explain the route?
It's going to be, it's going to start down at the elevator where they took out the mill. Because it's, uh, more room. Right now, we have, like, 19 Teamsters, and then it's going to come out in between the school and the fire hall, and it's going to go east, I think a block, then it turns and goes north a block, and then east a block, so it can go by the high rise, and then down to the stoplights, and through the two stoplights, and by the old good Sam, and then up, and then it comes out.
Do you want to go to Fifth Avenue?
Thank you, Fifth Avenue, and then back down, and back down to the elevator.
Make the route end up where they started.
Yep.
But straight back down Broadway or Main Street?
Right down Broadway.
All the way instead of going on the return trip?
Right.
So you're requesting no parking?
Between the two stoplights from 5:00 to 7:00, like it was two years ago.
Have you talked to Chief Statham?
I have.
And he said, what? He was okay with it?
Yeah, he was going to be here tonight to back me up. Oops, well, that's okay, I thought it started at 6:30, so I'm a little late. And then there's going to be wagon rides, like there was two years ago, too. Kristy Bjorgen, they had them behind Ace Hardware, and Ace Hardware sponsors that. This year, they'd like to do it across from Ace Hardware, in between Mercantile and where Greg Larson used to be. So I think that's part of city property also. Mercantile is... I don't know if it's going to be closed off, but they're going to have to have room to turn around. And I just got off the phone with Kristy a little while ago, and she didn't know exactly the route they were going to take, if they would go out the alleyway there, and then to the Catholic church and turn around and come back, or how they're going to actually work it. And that's 3:00 to 5:00.
How long do, have no parking on Main Street during the question time?
Motion second, discussion? Discussion? Do you need to include the parking, that's a bit lucky, like, between the ground, or is that included?
We wondered if from 3:00 to 5:00, people are coming to the light parade, they're going to look at the parking everywhere. I think that's tough to shut that off, in the parking lot. There is room at the end of the street, by the Catholic church, to make a U-turn there, you know? Perhaps they could come back up Main Street and go into the alleyway across the hardware store, you know? So they're pointing in the right direction to go back and turn around again, by the Catholic church at the end of the street. I mean, I just know, it's a busy time, and we're pretty short on parking anyway. I mean, Main Street won't be available.
So there'd be horses pulling this hay rack? Okay. I don't think that affects the water speed.
No, we're not, no, if it's one, it's just the street, so.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
And you want to, you, you'll be working with Chief Statham on all the logistics for all this?
I've turned that in already, for the route. He's had that for probably a month, so, and we went over it, so.
Thank you.
That should be good to go. Thanks.
You want to stop it there?
If you don't need it, I'll take it back.
Yeah.
Thank you, Grandin. Thank you.
Item number eight, utility rate adjustment. There was a handout in the packet, and we're looking at a resolution here this evening, and Don is going to speak to that.
I have lots of stuff to explain. The first thing I want to do is, I want to show you on the screen, and I'll do Zoom in, but I want to, kind of, draw a picture first. So I've met with, Danielle and I, met with Mayor and Councilman Foster a couple times earlier in the year, talking about the water and sewer rates, and, um, and the reason we started looking at this is two-fold. Number one, it was to do with fund balances in our utility accounts, and then also, kind of to prepare for the 2024 project, the utility portion of it, not necessarily the street project, because, you know, whether, whether the mendoc portion of it happens or not, and, you know, we've always had a possibility, we're still going to go forward with the utility portion. So, so we're looking at rates and, and balances and stuff, and one of the things I had done a couple of years ago was I found some software that was Freedom Municipalities, and I've been using this software to model our system, and it worked really, really well for showing us graphically, and that's what you guys got in the packets, how, how our rates are doing, fund balances are doing, whatnot. So, looking at the screen, um, there's too much for you guys to get this in the packet, but to look at it on the screen, basically, this area over here allows us to set in different rate structures for the different types of rates that we have. In the case of Pelican, well, I'll, I'll zoom in a second, because we can put in our rate structures here, existing, and what we want to go to. We also, in the step two portion of it, we put in the total volume of water that we've used, and I used the 2019, or 2020 number of volume, you know, to kind of put this model together. And then, and then over here, we're allowed to, you know, it asks us to put in the number of residential meters we have, number of commercial, number of industrial, and then, you'll look at some other information, too, but I'll kind of zoom in a little bit here just to kind of show you what this... But I'll kind of zoom in a little bit here just to kind of show you what this kind of looks like closer up. So you can see that basically what I'm doing is I'm using 2020 as the most recent, because 2021 isn't done yet, so budgets and everything else. And what it's going to do, I put in the rate structure for residential, the rate structure for commercial, and the rate structure for industrial down below. One of the things about the rate structures or putting them in here is you put in what the existing are, and then you can kind of put in, you know, what you might want to consider changing the rates, too. And so what I did was, and this is water, so in water, we're looking at 2021 now, 2021, this is our water per thousand rate and also our base rate of 1581. And so, you know, based on what we've talked about is looking at a 2022, keeping the base rate the same until 2023, and then it goes up $2 from 15 to 17. The 81 is the amount that we're required to pay the state in our rate structure. But then the per thousand rate in January of 2022, so this coming January, we would actually raise the per thousand rate from 250 up to 275, so quarter. And then the following year, we would raise it another quarter. The following year, we raise it another quarter, and then keep it the same in 2025. Okay? Right now, our rate structures are the same for residential, commercial, and industrial. So, you know, pretty much, here's the, here's the commercial component of it, everything's the same there. You go down to the industrial component of it, everything's the same there. Okay? And then, again, I mentioned that the other thing that we look at is what the volume. So in 2020, we used, in the residential, we used 3.5 million gallons of water. In the commercial, we used a little over 900,000 gallons of water. And then in the industrial, we used 8.2 million gallons of water. So you can see that the industrial is heavily a part of our water, so, water usage.
What percent of it?
Pretty much all of it. Well, actually, it is, because the only thing that we consider industrial in Pelican is the turkey plant. When there's, you know, we have some industrial zoning and we have stuff up there, but we bill them water based on industrial or in commercial. So turkey plant's the only thing. But there's two meters out there, so. And then, again, I just point out that we have, on average, about 635 residential meters, 105 commercial meters, and two industrial meters, which are both west central turkey. Then you can also put in here, if you anticipate a growth rate, which I just leave at zero, uncollected bills per year. We always, you know, technically, eventually, we collect some, I think we do have, but just to have something in here to account for uncollected, I just put 1% for commercial and residential with 0% for industrial, because the turkey plant will get a payment bill. There are some other parameters you can set here, but I don't, I don't worry about those so much. So then that kind of is the first part of entering the rate structures and the data. And then I go into this input two, and this is where the budgeting comes in. So in this particular part of it, I go through and I put in the budgets for the water, again, we're talking water, I put in the budgets for each year. If I know what they are, I'll use the actuals like in 2020. 2021, I use a budgeted number. And then when we get to 2022, what I'm, what I'm doing there is I'm actually looking at our debt service. I know what our debt service is going to be for many years. And so I'll, I'll put in the debt service and I'll estimate the budgets, and I might use 3% or whatever from year to year, just to get an idea. And because this only goes out five years or until 2025, that's really all I do with the budgets. I did put something in there for 2026, because I know in 2026, you'll notice, it's hard to read, but I'll zoom in here. In 2026, it does go from on an upward motion down, 2026, but that's because some debt service is done, is going to be paid off. And the software only goes out four years. So each year, I can update this stuff, and you'll see what effect it'll have in the later years. But it does go down there because of that. You can also put in additional expenses that you might know of, that, that, that would tend to grow every year. I don't have to use that, and I don't, I don't put any built-in reserves, anything like that. But over here, one of the things I was able to do at the beginning of 2020, I know what our fund balance is for our water fund, total funds. So I put that number in here. But you can also set a number or a threshold that you don't want to go below. And so what I do in water is I say 50,000. I never want our, our reserves or our fund balances, this 232, I never want it to go below 50,000. And I keep that number there as just kind of a, a number that, because if something big happens and you need money real quick, it's easy to spend $50,000 in the water fund. So that's the only reason that, that $50,000 is in there. So then after putting this information in, I go to this, and this is where it graphs it all for you. And this is what you guys got in your packets. I'll kind of zoom in a little bit and just go over kind of one at a time. So what this tells us is it's just a graphical way of looking to see, based on this first portion, if we stay with our existing rates, this lighter color is what basically would happen over the next five years. If you notice down here, one of the things that there's a flaw in this, in the software is I can't change these years. So it shows 16 to 20, but really what it is, is 20, 21, 22, actually, it's 21, 22, 23, 24, 25. And I think that's what you're saying. And the reason it says that is because I was able to actually put these into a PDF and then change it. Put in the software, I can't, those cells are locked. It's just kind of something that I guess they slipped up on and put together. Anyway, you can see that, based on the rate increases that I had talked about, we'll go back and go through, well, I kind of did go through them. Based on that, you can see that the darker color shows how much closer to the expenses in the budget we're going to reach with them state increase, rate increases. So in, in 2022, we gained a little bit of ground. In 2023, it gets closer. 2024, 2025. Okay? So this chart down here basically tells us, in 2022, basically, without changing rates, we're actually going to lose $57,000. If we, and that's 21. In 21, we did not hear a rate increase. So in 22, if we, if we stay the same, that deficit goes to 63,000. However, we're going to recover some now because we've raised the rates. So our deficit basically improved by about $25,000. And that's what that bottom shows you, it says you gained $25,000. So how do we, how do we pay for this deficit? It's going to take that fund balance and it's going to kind of shrink that fund balance. At 231, it would shrink that. That balance kind of shifted. It goes up and down throughout the year because we gained fund balance and all of a sudden then we have debt service. In, you know, February and August is maybe a big debt service payment month. So that fund balance drops and it starts trickling up again. So when I model it, I just kind of use, this is what it was at the beginning of the year. And then, and then my budgeting number that I showed you reflects those debt service payments. So then we go over to the next part of it that you guys got. And this graph basically shows graphically, again, using the new rate structures, you know, how, how the, how it would, how it would affect the fund balances. Now I'm going to scoot down to the second part, because you can kind of just see it takes and it grabs out of that the chunk. The top one basically goes out many, many years, as many as I want to go. But the bottom one reflects the next, the first five years, the five years that we're looking at in, in what the, what the, what the software is going to try and tell us. And then it just kind of moves out as we go year to year. So it kind of shows this $50,000 threshold, the dash line is the threshold that I want to maintain. And that can be changed to whatever, but I say 50. So it shows, the lighter colors shows if we stay on with the same rate structure by the end of 2022, now we're dropping below that $50,000. And by the time we get to the middle of 2022, we don't even have, we're out of money if we don't do anything. Okay? If we basically change the rate structure, then you can see the darker line shows that through 2022, we kind of start gaining ground again. After 2023, because we're doing another rate increase in 2023 in water, we start basically going in a more positive direction, and our fund balances kind of reflect that. Okay? And then this next, this next part basically is just, again, it's showing how much of our, what percent of our revenues cover our expenses. So if I just take it down a little bit, basically says, in 2021, the amount of revenues that we are going to be collecting is only going to cover 90% of our expenses. In 2022, it's worse if we don't do anything. But in 2022, we have that rate increase, now it's starting to drift up to about 94, we're going to cover 94%. So you follow where I'm going with it. By the time we get to 23, pretty much the rate increase in 20, in 23, we'll get to where we're covering our expenses to the revenues, to the revenues that we're trying to generate. Okay? So that's what this stuff is trying to portray. Going back to the first table then, or the first chart, I'm zooming in on it. This is what kind of, you know, Steve, Councilman Foster, and the mayor, and Danielle and I sat here and ran different scenarios to see what we want, what we would want to do with the rates to start trying to make adjustments now, because one thing that we know is that we need to start basically increase the fund balance in, in both of the funds. We'll look at sewer after this. But one of the things is the water, the last time the water had, had a rate increase was in 2012. The last time the sewer, and at that time, the sewer did go up also. But after that, we haven't done anything on the water. The next time the sewer rate changed was in 2014, and it went up a dime to the 320 that we're at right now. And so, so there hasn't been any rate increases. So from that standpoint, you know, the community has benefited from not paying more for the water over all these years. Should we have had rate increases prior to now? Yeah, we should have. In fact, I would go as far as saying, we shouldn't be waiting five or six or seven years to have rate increases and then doing big rate increases. We should have probably been looking at this, you know, probably every two or three years, look at somewhat of a minor adjustment. And I'll chalk it up to COVID and everything else, but we probably should have looked at it earlier. I do, I do follow the fund balances very closely. And that was one of the reasons I wasn't too concerned about any rate adjustments up to this point, because our fund balances were pretty good. But we found a few things in the, in our, in our reading, leader system, in our, in our utility billing that had to be corrected, which had an effect on fund balances. I know we've just put $14 million in that wastewater plant, but every time there's water down there, we talk to thousands of dollars, and we found a few hiccups this year. You guys will see when we start looking at the water and sewer budgets, which would have been great to have them done for this, but I've already got it done enough to where I know what our rates need to do for now. But after we get done with this, before the end of the year, I still hope to go over water sewer budgets with the council. But the wastewater plant specifically has, has taken a pretty hard hit this year. So again, what we're looking at is in, for water in 2022, which is coming just a month or a couple months away, we are looking at increasing just the flow rate by 25 cents from 250 to 275. But in 2023, at this point, we're looking at a $2 base rate increase and raising the flow rate up another quarter. This could change, but that's what we're proposing to do right now. The resolution that you're going to be looking at, that we'll talk about a little bit, the resolution only sets the base, those are the adjustments and the corrections that we want to do in 2022. If we want to do something in 2023, we'll come before the city council before that time and pass another resolution, make any adjustments, okay? But I'm not going to blow this, the, the commercial and industrial rates, because the structure is the same for residential, I'm not going to spend time on that. So any questions on all this stuff?
This is not a question, but it's a statement, because when we looked at the budgets, we did look at this. And because we were positive on the fund balances, we made a decision, maybe without a lot of discussion, but we made a decision to keep rates at where they were. We didn't, because if we were positive until this last two years, I think this, we've kind of left those rates alone, but we've always been positive. So we didn't make any changes. And because we've had some things happen, we've had some fences come up, now this has changed a little bit, we're definitely have to look at making some changes here after this moment in time.
You know, the other thing I'll add, too, is it wasn't all driven by higher expenses. It was also driven by lower revenues. You would have thought that in 2020, with COVID going on and more people at home, instead of running around, that they would have used more water. That wasn't the case.
Should have given more to their hands more.
Whatever, whatever. But there was a dramatic drop between 19 and 20 in revenue, which is obviously driven by the amount of water that flows through your, your house. 2021, again, people are starting to get out and everything else. We had a drought. And we were encouraging people to conserve water, but with all the dry weather, they didn't use water. So 2020, I think we're going to come in well under our projections for 2021. So for the last two years, revenues have been down substantially.
2021, nobody went out, nobody showered.
That's right, nobody showered. So that did not help our fund balance, you know, help us meet our expenses. So it really, it really did eat away at our, at our reserves, so.
And you talk about fund balance. I remember required by TFA to keep a certain amount of fund balance.
We'll talk about that on the sewer side, not in the water.
Not in the water.
No, no. And remind me of that, Brett, so I do, so I do talk about it. So I'm going to, I'm going to kind of switch over to the sewer side. Okay, so it's the same cables. I'm going to just go right into the rate structure that we were, that we're talking about. Can you see that? I'm going to blow it up more. Okay, in the sewer side, the state doesn't drive the 18 cents, like, or the 81 cents like it does in water. So in the sewer side, basically, it's just a flat rate of 15 bucks. So we're talking about not doing a, a flat rate adjustment on the sewer side until 2023. So we'll stay $15 in 2023 January, we're going to 16. As far as the, the flow rates, right now, it's setting at 320 per thousand. We're not talking about raising the flow rate until 2023. So there was going to be no flow rate adjustment or base rate adjustment in the sewer in 2022 come January. But we're going to talk about that because of the lack of revenues. We might want to look at doing that. So again, same thing for the commercial, the rate structure is the same. Same thing for the industrial, the rate structure is the same for the flow rate. The only difference is, and I can't, it's another problem with this software, I can't expand the, the cells, but you can see the 2021. This is the, the only, the other rate structure in sewer that's different from the flow This is the, the only, the other rate structure in sewer that's different from the flow rate and the base rate that's normally charged is industrial. West Central Turkey gets a base rate that's, that's, that's figured by, there's a lot more that goes into it. It's their debt service that they help, helping us pay for, et cetera, et cetera. So right now, West Central Turkey's base rate is seventy five thousand dollars a month. On top of that, they pay a flow rate. So they really pay a large part of our utility structure for our revenues. You can't see it, but in 2021, up here you can see it's still seventy five thousand. And it stays seventy five thousand, we never change that. At one point, we had talked about in 2023 or 2022, increasing that to eighty five thousand. Basically, because I keep track of, and I don't have it on, I probably could have shared it with you, but I keep track of, of all of our debt and our, our expenses, our actuals and our estimate, estimated, specifically for West Central Turkey. And I did share this with them, so they keep, see how we come up with that seventy five thousand. Of course, they'd love to see that number go down. And it's not anticipated to go down until 2026, or 2027 timeframe, the end of 2027. Because that's when that big phosphorus project gets paid off. They pay ninety two percent of the debt service on that phosphorus project. So their, their portion of the phosphorus project, their debt service is three hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So that's huge. When that goes away, that three hundred thousand won't be passed on to Turkey by then. So that's when it goes down. Well, this obviously software will reflect that when we get out that part. Now, when we go out to 2025. So we were looking at changing it to eighty five thousand. When I looked at prior to twenty, if I look at just the debt service of the city, the wastewater plant and everything through 2027, and stop there, it would justify raising it from the seventy five thousand to eighty five thousand until we get to twenty seven. But in twenty seven, because that drops off, their debt service within, or their, their base rate within only dropped down to about sixty nine to seventy thousand because of the debt that's still out there. And so, so I thought, well, let's just look at doing it this way. I ran the numbers through all of our debt service and it took us out to 2033. Well, if I use all them numbers, and average what West Central Turkey should be paying for a base rate through that time, it's about seventy five thousand dollars, seventy five, five thirty. I thought, we'll just use that and keep their base, their base rate at seventy five thousand just for the long term. Do it for them, and we get revenues. We'd love to have the revenues sooner than later, but we'll do that through the rate structure. So, so that's why it stays seventy five thousand, okay? So when we get done putting in the budgets and everything else, and we get to the, to the, to the graphs here, again, combination of expenses and lower water usage. The existing rates basically keep everything the same. With the rate structures, there will be a plan with no rate increase until 2023. We don't see any adjustment until 2023, and then we move up a little bit. This is what our expenses and debt service are planned on doing at that time. So it's kind of not, we're making up a little ground, but not a whole lot. We don't make up, actually, we lose ground in 2024, because we add debt service. Our expenses go up. And in 2025, again, we lose a little bit. So you go down here, you look at, we stay the same. Here's what the numbers show, you know, two hundred thousand dollar deficit by the time we get to 2025, actually. And then we do make up some ground, about forty seven thousand dollars worth with the debt structure that we set up. Because we didn't, once we changed the, the rate structure in 2020, 2023, we don't increase it again, we just left it at that. So, and we'll look at that as we go further down the years, but for 2022 specifically, is what we're talking about now. So when you look at these numbers, and then you go over and look at the graphs, it doesn't look as nice as the water did. The water, we stayed above the threshold. The one thing I'll mention is, in the sewer, I set the threshold number down here. I set this threshold number, instead of fifty thousand, I put it at a hundred thousand. Because the sewer plant, something goes wrong down there, it costs more than what it does with the water. So I just put it over at a hundred thousand. I always like to stay with a hundred thousand dollar cushion, all right? Where you can see by this chart that with the rate structure I have set in here, we start going down. And by the time we get to, to mid 2023, we're below a hundred thousand. And actually, twenty four, we're actually, actually twenty four, then we're down with no money at all. With the rate structures I have in here, it kind of gets us out until mid 2024. One of the things about this, it does not take into account any of the debt we would have with the, with the street project in 2024. So obviously, with that, you add that into this, everything changes. Because I don't know what that debt service is going to be. We're still waiting for numbers, so, you know, in a sense. I could estimate it, but right now, I'm just trying to focus on really, what are we going to do in 2022? But knowing that 2024 is coming and it's going to come quick, we might want to consider making our sewer look a little bit better than this, starting in 2022. Something we can talk about doing. So obviously, you can see that, again, when you look at, you know, looking at how much of our revenue, what percent of our revenue is going to take care of our, you know, our expenses, it's not looking good here either. Right now, 2022 with no rate increase, you know, we're basically only collecting ninety percent through our revenue stream to pay for ninety percent of our expenses. And it doesn't get a whole lot better, ninety two percent and it starts drifting off again. So as much as we were considering, thinking about and talked about just changing the rate structure for the sewer, leaving it the same until 2023, we might want to think about, not so much the base rate, but think about, in 2023, we're looking at a twenty five cent increase. And that was the next rate increase we were going to do? Maybe in 22, we jump up half of that. Maybe we jump to three forty five, make it twenty five cents next year. So I wanted to have council be a part of that discussion when it comes to sewer, because the sewer doesn't look near as, as good as the water does. I can change the number right here on all three of them and show you what that does to the graph, if you want to do that. And let's just try it for the sake of doing it. I've got this set up, I think, so if I punch it in one, say we, say we go up, well, let's just go up to three point three five. We should have changed it, yeah, changed it in the commercial side, we changed it for the industrial. I just set the four hundredths here, so I only had, since our rate structures are the same, so basically change one, it would change them all for us. Now, increasing them like by fifteen cents next year, you go over to the charts right away. And it, it helps, but still, it doesn't do, it doesn't do it as, 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 as much as it, as it, as it should. We have to do it, you know, for many centuries to do that. And knowing that, my thinking is, I'm more inclined to say, let's do something next year in 22 with the sewer to start us going down the road, to getting it back on track, than just waiting until 23 and then jumping up by forty, you know, twenty five cents. Any questions on that? I'm going to go back to. Pretty hard, it's such a small change that we made, so you don't see the change really in the graphs that easy.
When you changed that for the 2022, to be the quarter, to the twenty five cents or whatever you did there, right?
Yeah.
Did it, did it calculate it out to be an additional, or did it carry a quarter for each year for a while on that graph?
No, what it, no, what it would, what it would do is, it would, it would show, basically, if I changed that to the three point two five, what it's going to reflect is, the, the graph would change to show you that it'll, it'll reflect the twenty five cents change in 2022, but then it's going to show a dime change in 2023. So we just basically said going from twenty two, jumping up twenty five cents. We went up fifteen cents, and then we went to the, another dime to go up twenty five cents. You know, if we do raise, yeah. So if we do raise it by fifteen cents next year, you know, we can raise it another fifteen cents here and then, you know, keep it. And to be honest with you, we don't have the necessary to look at what we want to do for the next five years and increases, or four years. All we really have to do is think about, what do we want to do next year? Because next year, we're going to be looking at, what do we want to do come 2023? So if we do fifteen cents this year, it may be another fifteen cents in 2023. It may be twenty, it may be even more than that, because by then, I know what, what our street project debt service is going to be, and that's going to have to kind of get reflected in this also. But we know, we do know that the rates need to go up, and they need to go up probably every year for two, if not three years, maybe four years, to catch, to catch everything. The one thing is, obviously, maybe not four years, because 2027, we lose that big debt. So that's going to help the rate structure, so we don't have to increase. But I think for, for, especially sewer side, I think we do think, have to think about an increase in 22, 23, and 24.
Don, you want to explain this a little?
Yeah, okay, let me jump, let me jump to that real quick. What this reflects is, on, every year, we try and do, I'm going to boost it down just for a second here. Every year, we try and get into, the consulting firm A two, AE two S, they survey utilities, and they do, they do cities in Minnesota, North Dakota, Montana, Iowa. They do a bunch of different states. And by participating in the survey, they give you free, you know, we, we usually give about three different survey reports, bound and bound, nicely bound reports. And we were doing it every year. This particular year in 2021, we started using it or doing it, the utility clerk we had started filling out the survey, I was working with her, but then she quit, and it kind of got lost in the shuffle, we missed the deadline. So what I did, I was able to take, just, just Minnesota. So I was able to take Minnesota's result, put it in a PDF, and then I, we went to our existing rates today and said, where would we land in here? Well, if you look at this thing, man, Thompson, Thompson, Minnesota, on a monthly basis, it looks like they just have water. Let's go to Lexington. Lexington Water and Sewer, a month is forty eight dollars and fifteen cents. This is all based on six thousand gallons. They want everybody to tell them what their rates would be on a six thousand gallon usage for, for water and sewer. So I'm going to increase a little bit here.
And that six thousand gallons is a little high, right?
It's high, because our average, I was going to ask Danielle if she could pull this up for somehow, but they use six thousand gallons, but our resident, residential usage is not six thousand gallons on average. I would tend to say probably between two and three, maybe, three and four. So what we're using, they want to, they will ask for six. They also do it for communities under five thousand, population in communities over five. So we're in the under five thousand group. So if you look at, you know, Perlm, the state Perlm, Perlm existing in 2021, they may have had a rate increase since then, but Perms is fifty, fifty dollars and seventy two cents a month. Pelican with our existing rates, when I impose it in here, is sixty five oh one, okay? Perms a little bit lower. But to think about it, Perlm doesn't probably have the debt service they have, and they also have a lot more residential, commercial and industrial we do pay for there. So their rates can be lower, okay? So based on the water sewer rates that I showed you guys, what we would go to in 2024, ours would jump from sixty five dollars to seventy four dollars, if the usage average usage was six thousand dollars. We know for residential, it's not. So let's say if our residential was, was six thousand. If our, if our residential was three thousand dollars or three thousand gallons, you could basically, it would be somewhere in the middle of all of this. So you could just see, even, even if it was six thousand, over a three-year period, it only goes up nine dollars. That's not much of an increase monthly. And theirs isn't going to go up nine dollars a month, because they don't do six dollars. So, and this, this shows it based on what I was talking about. So if we end up raising the sewer rate by fifteen cents, over what we had, we're doing no rate increase, we're going to do it by fifteen cents, it isn't going to move this number much, because we don't do six thousand gallons a month. You get what I'm going with it? You know, you think, well, a rate increase every year for three years, from the grand scheme of things, this, this is nine bucks. By the time we get to 2024, things are going to change, obviously, because we're going to be taking on more debt. Even if we don't do the street project with MIND ON, and we decide to go forward with something to get up to our, our water main, we're going to incur debt to do that. So this, that's going to change these rates. Even if, even if we don't do anything, and the project goes away and we don't mess with our infrastructure for another five or six years beyond 2024, heaven forbid, but if that's the case, there will still be, be these rate structure changes, because we're going to still have the debt service we have. We see our fund balances by the graphs, our fund balances are still going to be depleting, because we're, we're not covering our expenses. And if we do have main rates that we got to deal with, that's extra expense on, on the system too. So, again, I, I, I think after looking at it and thinking about it, I think we should make the adjustment in sewer side for 2024. It's not going to change these. If you look at the grand scheme of things here too, look where Pelican is. This is all these cities. Staples is down here, you know, they're kind of in our region. You know, these other cities too. Pelican is, their, their sewer rate, sewer water and sewer utility rates, based on the averages in Minnesota, we're still low. Yeah, great, great, we wish we could stay there. But even with the rate structures that we have, you know, mapped out here, in seventy four dollars in 2024, we're still low compared to a lot of these other cities. We don't, hopefully, never get into the point where we're paying a hundred and thirty bucks or a hundred bucks a month, but we're not, we're not there. We will want to try and get into this survey again, so that Pelican shows up in the chart and we won't have to impose it on the grid. So with that being said, I'm going to go back to the sewer again. I, I would, I would suggest that in 2022, we do make an adjustment and maybe go to three thirty five. And so having said that, if I jump over to.
You said sewer, the three thirty five?
Correct. So that's why I wanted to jump to this resolution, actually. Because what we'll end up doing then, and do you want, did you guys go through the resolution? Did you read it? Do you want me to go through it real quick?
Go through it, go through it.
Okay, so I'm going to do it quickly. So basically, this is what, going through research to figure out what we've been trying to put in the system, what's, you know, in the system, what should be in the system, this is what Danielle and I come up with. Basically, every property owner has a one-time sewer utility connection fee of five bucks. When somebody hooks up to it, it's five bucks. The water site, a one-time connection of thirty bucks. There is a one-time iron removal assessment of a hundred dollars. So there's a hundred and thirty five dollars anytime somebody hooks up to our system, one-time fees. Mobile Home Park, there is a one-time fifty dollar deposit, which I believe they give back when they move out, okay? We do have sales tax that's applied to the, to the water consumption for commercial users only, and that's just based on the sales tax rate. There's a ten dollar late fee if the bill's not paid by the twenty sixth of the month. Second notice shut offs are delivered on the twenty eighth of the month, and there's a delivery fee of twenty five dollars if that happens. There's a charge, if shut off due to no payment, there's a thirty dollar fee. If the payment doesn't go through the bank, the NSF charges thirty dollars, okay? So that's, that's that portion of it. Then we get to the rates. There's the money. There's a monthly charge of 81 cents collected by the Department of Health that was required to do by state statute. And then down here, residential, commercial, industrial, commercial, uh, consumers are billed at $15 per year and 275 per thousand. This is the new rate then. We've gone from 250 to 275, uh, per month, plus a dollar per unit, per month after the first unit. So that's apartment buildings, it's mixed-use businesses, nursing homes, concrete care, hotels, that type of thing. We only have one meter, but that meter basically comes for the water in several units. So we also tack on a surcharge of a dollar for every unit. The meter gets them one, but if they got two, it's the meter plus one, so that's just a dollar, okay? And that's always been the system. Um, so is this other stuff, actually, it's just the rate structures that are changing here. So the sewer rates would basically be $15 base rate, but this would be 335 per thousand. But that's what we're going to do, okay? And then, um, industrial customers are billed the same rates as residential and commercial, except West Central Turkeys, whose base rate is 75,000. And keep in mind, again, this is for 2021. If for some reason, going forward, as I analyze and look at this stuff next year, if it looks like, you know, there is justification to do something different here, we'll pass another resolution to do that.
For 2022.
Pardon?
2022.
2022, I'm sorry. Okay, so West Central Turkeys plays 75,000 base rate and their flow rate 320, that will be 335. Per thousand, and then sewer-only customers are, are billed at 35, for $31 per month. So there are some people that may just be on sewer, but they don't hear a lot, they get $31 a month. That's the resolution. Um, the thing with, with West Central Turkeys, the way it is, but, uh, they play, they're paying, you know, the, the, the water based on the flow rate is the same as everybody else, 275. They use 8 million gallons of water a year at that flow rate. While sewer is, for everybody, is based on the amount of water consumed in the water. So when West Central Turkeys get billed, I believe this is when they're billed, they're still billed commercial for, uh, sewer on that flow rate also. So it, it, you know, West Central has always been, uh, Genu has always been critical about the utility that they have to pay in Pelican Rapids, higher than any state in the, in the United States that Genu and, and Hormel has, California, wherever. They don't pay as high a utility rates as they pay in Pelican Rapids. Part of that is because their base rate's $75,000 a month, so.
Any questions for Don?
I do.
So if you take 25 cents more for wa, uh, water and a 15 cent sewer, what does that increase percentage-wise for the average residential in town?
Well...
Raise on a $3,000 floor, let's say. That seems to be the average for the city.
Yeah, whatever the average.
Well, let's say, let's say the average is 2,000. If we raise it, if we raise it by, let's say we raise the water by 25 cents, it's 25 cents per thousand. So if they have a $3,000 average, it goes up 75 cents a month.
Yeah, 3,000 gallon average.
Right.
75 cents a month.
And, and a lot of people are less than that. A lot of the seniors use a thousand.
That would be double, right? Though, because of water and sewer.
Yes.
Yeah, so a dollar.
Well, but the sewer, yeah, because we're raising the sewer 15 cents. So the sewer would basically go up by, um, 45 cents. So what we're doing, if, if they use 3,000 gallons, it should go up 75 plus 45.
You said 3,000, that's the average or?
I, I think the average is really, probably, yeah, that could be.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Probably $2.10 per billing cycle.
Yeah, and, and there are commercial businesses that use more than that, there are apartment buildings that use more than that, but on average, I think, because there's a lot of single families, there's a lot of seniors that use less than 2,000 gallons. Seniors that use the base, that, you know...
Right, I was just, I was just splitting the difference from that study that we did.
Yeah.
You know, it's a rough estimate.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This kind of does show, if you really wanted to see it, it does kind of show based on the usage, um, you know, what their bill would do, you know, based on our changes. So at, at 2,000 gallons, our current 2,000 gallons of 80 for water is $80 and 21, $20 and 81 cents. Um, in 22, we didn't do that, so it's the same, and 23, it goes up to $21.30. So this shows you what you were asking. But to look at all the numbers you find those, you're right, it's a lot easier to just estimate the way we just did, so. So, so with that being said, if the council is fine, what we want to do is, if you pass a resolution tonight, our next step then, um, is to, in the next two billing cycles, also get notices in those utility bills of the rate change that's going to happen in January 1st, 2022. And we would have liked to have done this about two, three months ago, but we were really busy with other things.
What's the council's?
My bad.
I believe we have that resolution 2021 dash 16, with the amended changes to the price 523, 45 for the sewer rates.
I'll tell you. Oh, sure. Just 330. 330.
330.
I don't know what you said, 225.
You mean 335, but.
Yeah. Sorry.
We walked in something different. That guy said 45. Okay, we have a motion in the second, discussion, discussion.
Sewer rate is now 335.
Correct. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same, motion carried. Okay, item number nine is 2024 Street Project Items of Discussion. There's three different bullet points, and we're looking to make three different decisions.
So this basically is, oh, this is, this is any of the, one correction. I had this little line right here, that was an alley. I kind of, when I was, when I was drawing it, I, I did, I had the, that was big and I, I should have went through it. It's really down here, okay? And I'll explain those, and then you'll see. So, so one of the things that, that we need to talk about and decide on, and I know we've talked about the two long lines, we have talked about before, it's not in a lot of deep detail, but we knew this day was coming. So what I want to try and do is, um, what we want to try and decide on tonight, so I can let MINDOT know so the numbers can be in the budget estimates, um, is what we want to do with pedestrian infrastructure along these corridors, and I'm going to zoom back out and just hit them one at a time. So the first one... The first one, we know that MINDOT is, we've already talked about, and in their design, it shows taking and extending the pedestrian infrastructure all the way up to 8th Avenue, um, right in here, right in this area here, uh, along the, on the, on the west side of the road, so that all the employees of West Central have something to walk on. But at first, we had talked, at one time, we were looking at the possibility, based on the complete street project, of also putting pedestrian infrastructure on the east side of Highway 59 from 5th Avenue, just north of City Hall, up along the stretch also. And it was kind of, at one point, we decided, but we didn't make a firm, I don't think we made it, maybe we did make a firm decision, but it was decided not to do that for a couple reasons. Number one, the first stretch of this right here, which is that, the, the pink house on the corner here, so I'm going to do a little bit more, is very steep. This first section on Long's House, and the next house, actually, it's very steep. And to put a, any type of a sidewalk, even if it's just a six footer in there, it's going to require a retaining wall. MINDOT is cost-sharing and paying for most of the eight-foot wide shared use path on the west side. They will not pay anything on this side because they're paying for it on one side, they're not going to share on the other side. That's just their policy. So anything that's done over here is going to be all seen costs. Well, if we have to put retaining walls in here and extend this sidewalk up all the long we want to do it, it is going to add substantially to this project. And this portion of it, the majority of this, I pretty much can tell you is not going to be PFA eligible, so.
Plus there's houses there that...
Right.
Plus there's houses. Sidewalk in there, your sidewalk is two feet from the front door.
Well, in some cases, it'd be pretty close. I mean, we'd stay on the Boulevard, you know, the right-of-way area, but it's, so this, this, the orange is basically, doesn't represent the width, it's not accurate, it's just, yeah, okay.
You know, since they're called commercial along here, I don't see a point in putting it on the east side of the street anyway.
Well, the reason Tom Pace brought it up is because he was contacted by one of the individuals that lived in this area, and they asked, you know, if it was going to be put in along there because they'd like to see it. But in the last discussion we had with, with MINDOT, the last meeting, um, you know, that's where this kind of came up, we, we need to know what the city wants to do here. But the other part of it is, knowing that there's going to be infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure on the west side, one of the things MINDOT, if the city doesn't want to do anything here, they want to make sure, we talked about certain areas or certain places where we want to make sure there is a crosswalk so people can cross over and use the west side. One of them, um, that was very important that we talked about was this property right here, which is the, the, the apartment building. One house, but a lot of apartments in. Making sure that those residents, when they come out of the house, and there was, you know, there was a location that they had come up with, where they'd be able to have a crosswalk to get them across the street without putting bump alternates, it would just be a crosswalk across there. So with putting crosswalks in certain points along here, that would alleviate, uh, provide some more safety and alleviate the need to put the sidewalk in here. But I wanted to know what council thought about it because, granted, we do have that grant money if we go forward with the project as, as with MINDOT, um, but that is going to be used up very easily on our portions of the west side, et cetera, et cetera. So this, to be honest, I don't even know if we can afford to do this based on our debt limit, our debt capacity, that 3%. So we, we, we might, we'll be looking at that, but we need to know what the number for this is. So if it's something we want to consider, I need to let them know, otherwise it's not going to be a waste of time putting numbers to it.
I'm making a motion that we don't use the east side of the street on that corridor as part of the shared use path, our pedestrian path, or whatever you call it, sidewalk.
We have a motion in the second, discussion, discussion.
Can we request? No, like, when we talk about crosswalks, are we going to ask how many or where or?
Though, well, that's part of the, you know, the, the design meetings that we've been all involved in, and, and if we end up having that public information meeting and all that stuff, there'll be, there'll be, there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment on where those crosswalks would be. As far as the, the meetings that we're having monthly, we've had, um, we've had them discussions. What we talked about made sense, um, and obviously it's at 10 o'clock here in the day, but again, it's open for anybody on that advisory committee or anybody that wants to come to those meetings, um, to come and be a part of what we're talking about, definitely. But where, where we talked, and I don't remember off the top of my head, Steve, where they were, other than, other than the big apartment building that has a lot of the, um, you know, small i residents in, you know, having, making sure that they have something very close by them on this. I think this is, um, this is 7th, this is 7th Avenue. Putting one at 7th Avenue was what we talked, that was one of them for sure we talked about.
There is already one at 5th, right? Yeah, there is one.
Where is it?
There isn't one in the bar, you know, but there will be, no. That was one that there will be. So we know that there was one here because you've got, um, you know, Pixley's back here, you've got this house, you've got, you know, the Gillespie apartment building, the old Gillespie apartment building. So right there at 7th, it made sense to put one. We were definitely putting one there.
That's, that's all that stuff. The Gillespie apartment was up there.
That big, that big house on, that we were talking about initially.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's up there. It's up there. But it's, yeah, it's right here. It's this house, Pixley's here, Gillespie's here. So there would be a crosswalk right here for sure for all these residents here. This house could, you know, uh, resident could come down and cross over, not too far. In the future...
The Sevaz Boys need them.
Who?
Sevaz Boys. When they go over to the restaurant.
Yeah. Oh, down here.
That's up, that's right in block off of 5th though, so that'd be stacked in the crosswalks.
But that's it, but that's it, but that's another location is right here, um, on 6th. Having one on 6th Street so they could walk over and cross over too. So they wouldn't have to walk up here, but, so we, we talked about the main block area. And the city basically, at some point, if we wanted to, not part of this project for that later time, we could look at, you know, the possibility of connecting up, not going all the way from 5th and having to deal with retaining walls, but where it's flattered, put a, put a sidewalk from, from 5th up to 7th where them crosswalks are. So we don't have to do this part of the project. It could be at another time. So did you guys, did you call that vote?
No, no, I think we have a motion to that.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same? Okay, carry. Can you notice the third bullet point?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I took them in opposite order. I'm going to go to the middle one though.
That's good.
Okay, this middle section right here, if you notice on, on 3rd, right down here, there's a sidewalk that goes the whole length of this block. And right there above this property or by even the, this corner house, it ends. And so MINDOT wants to know, because it's all going to be tore up around here, part of this project, we want to have that sidewalk extend out to the intersection. And I'm of the opinion, yes, because it'll be cheaper for us to do it during this project than if we basically try and do it on our own later. Or maybe not. Maybe we just basically use some of our budget, our street budget, we put money away for sidewalks and have that filled in. We might want to have a conversation with the property owners, but, um, for all practical purposes, for this block and the fact that, that there's going to be a crossing right here, we've got the soccer field further to the east, and there's a lot of foot traffic through here. It makes sense to put that sidewalk in.
Zedaro Street with cars parked on both sides, sidewalk.
Correct. So, and we don't have to have the property owner permission necessarily to put it in the Boulevard, but it does make sense to do it. And again, we don't have to include it in the project, they just want to know if we do. We can have that, we can hire, you know, Blake, Kelly Funk, anybody that tours country and have them give us a code on putting that sidewalk in and not do it as part of the project.
So that would be a more extension to the project?
No.
And then after meeting?
Yes, just like everybody else, they'd have to keep it.
It was taken, taken out in the past?
I don't know what happened.
I think it was.
I don't ever remember what they had.
I mean, many, many, many years ago.
And you know, and actually this empty space right here is actually 80's lot.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't think, I don't, if you, if we had a conversation with 80's about it, I really don't think they'd object. Knowing the purpose for it is because there's a lot of foot traffic over the soccer field. I mean, we, we can definitely, we can talk to both these property owners, but...
I encourage anybody who hasn't, at any given day, at any given time, drive down that road and see how narrow it is. Because there's a lot of cars are down both sides of the road all the time. And people are trying to walk.
If you stay near, you could extend.
On the side of the cars.
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think people go out on the street, I think they walk the sidewalk and they walk right in the Boulevard in the grass.
If you're, instead of stop that, go from that hole to next to 80's property.
No, it's, it's, it's set, because it can't be in the Boulevard anymore.
You want a motion?
Yes. Yeah, I would, because, because on this one, I need to know though, do you want to include it in the project, or should we just look at doing it our own, by ourselves?
Well, MINDOT wasn't paid for it, was it?
No. They're not, yeah, they're not, MINDOT won't pay for this. They just... They just want to know, does the city want this built in as part of the project so it gets done? We'll pay for it either way. The question is, do we think we could get it less cost through all the concrete that works that's going to be done when they're in town or do we want to hire it separately and have somebody just do it for us?
So when you say build in?
It's, there's, there's no sidewalk. The sidewalk ends and there's a grass gap.
You have to have it activated and formed up.
Yeah.
Amazing layer.
Yeah.
It's our cost no matter what.
Yeah, it is our cost no matter what.
But there will be something, you know, a lot of concrete.
Because, because if, if we want to do it as part of the project, they want to include this in the bidding documents.
So we could possibly get a lesser rate for yardage?
I would think if part of the project, because all the concrete work we're going to be doing, it would be less.
But their motion? Motion to what?
To.
Do it.
And yes, on the sidewalk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Young, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same, motion carried.
It's always confusing, I'm sorry. Okay, the last section then is along 108. And there may be other things, one or two that come up, but these are the ones that, this is one way west. So this is the new apartment building right here. So right now, the sidewalk on the south side of 108 West is being done as part of the project, and MINDOT is cost sharing in that with the city. Do we want to extend the sidewalk on the north side? Right now, there is sidewalk on the north side right here till you get to Third Street. And then as it continues on, there's nothing. We have talked, and part of the plan of the pro, in the project, is to make sure that there is a crosswalk right here at the intersection of, of the new street. A crosswalk, a crosswalk here, but the crosswalk, because of where this is on 108, it's not going to be a striped crosswalk with, you know, on the street.
Crossing signs.
Yeah. There'll be a pedestrian crossing sign, but there won't be any stripes there. And they can't because of, I don't know if it's, if it's because of the speed limit there or something. So it's just, they don't do it. But, but there can, there, but there will be pedestrian crossing signs, whatever, getting the residents and individuals over to this side of the street. So, and then there'll be the path, the shared use path there. Now, there is no other residents along this side except for where that new infrastructure is, Martinson, Harstead, and then Magnuson here.
They're right there.
Yeah, so, so.
And in between there and Magnuson, that's all, that's wetlands.
Yeah, that's wetlands.
So you're little.
So again, this would be totally city's cost, and it would not be, none of this would be PFA eligible. So we'll all be.
So do they have any wetland credits for the wetland or not?
Um, depending on, on, it's possible. Or we build on.
I believe we do not include this.
Or.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Young, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same, motion carried. Thank you, Don. Okay.
Good evening, your honor members of the council. Now that you've made your three decisions, I just have a request. As was mentioned just now, even though you voted no on the first one and the third one on 108 and 59, Don alluded to the possibility that you may choose to do one or both of those in the future. And so this is as much a request for MINDOT District Four as it is for you. But when, you know, we're, we're getting into the nitty gritties, I'm also on the project management team, we're getting into the nitty gritties of the design of both West 108 and 59. For example, let's take the segment of 59 there where you just voted no on the, on the path on the east side. There may be a temptation on the part of MINDOT District Four because you, you've opted out of building that path on the east side to shift the alignment of 59 slightly to the east now that MINDOT District Four perceives, oh, we've got room on that side because they're not putting in the trail on that side. And I would ask you and MINDOT District Four to resist that temptation. Don't align the road in a manner that precludes you from adding that trail on the east side sometime in the future. And I would say that the same principle applies to the path that you just nixed on the north side of 108 West. There may be a temptation on the part of MINDOT District Four to shift the alignment of 108 slightly north now that they know that they're not going to be putting a trail in there. And again, I would, I would ask you and MINDOT District Four to please resist that temptation because even though, as you alluded to, there are wetlands in that area too, so I know there's extra challenges there. But you may at some point in the future decide to put a path on the north side of 108 there. And so let's not do anything in 2024 that precludes the possibility of, of putting that trail in sometime in the future when you do have the money for it. And I would say that the same prin, Bob had to leave, but I would say that the same, uh, my same request applies to, to the design and placement of underground utilities. I don't know the extent to which decisions about underground utilities have impacts on these future potential trail segments, but if Bob were still here, I'd tell him, and I, I will tell him when I have an opportunity. When he's making decisions about what to do with the underground utilities, please don't make any decisions, if you can avoid them, that would preclude the possibility of adding that trail segment on the east side of 59 or on the north side of 108 in the future. I don't know the extent to which there's potential impacts there, but if there are, please be mindful of that. And then the third thing I would say is that about six or seven years ago, I also work on the Heartland Trail through Becker County, which right now ends at Parker's Prairie, but we're trying to get it all the way to Moorhead eventually. And MINDOT posed, District Four posed a question to our committee in Becker County about six or seven years ago. They said, we're doing some work on 34 between Parker's Prairie and Osage. We estimate that we're going to have about a mile of free grading, basically a mile of free extra dirt. Which side of 34 do you want it on? So we actually did a study to figure out which side of 34 we wanted the trail on between Parker's Prairie and Osage. We determined which side we wanted it on, we told MINDOT, and MINDOT actually gave us a mile of free prep grading along 34. And I think ultimately, we decided the south side in that case. But my point with that is that I don't know what the cut-fill balance or the dirt balance is going to be on this 59 and 108 project, and probably MINDOT District Four doesn't even know at this point. But when they do all their calculations, MINDOT might discover that they're going to have excess fill as part of this project, and they might be looking for somewhere to put it. And there may be an opportunity, for example, on the east side of 59, for them to give you some extra fill or some free prep grading on the east side of 59 there to accommodate the possibility of that future trail segment, or similarly on the north side of 108. And so that's something we can also work on with District Four, but they may have some extra dirt for you when all said and done. And you might want to be thinking strategically about where to put it. And I would suggest that even though you just voted down these two segments for now, that that segment on the east side of 59 or the segment on the north side of 108 might be a good candidate for some extra dirt for prep grading for a possible future trail addition. And that's, that's all I've got tonight. So thank you.
Item number 11 is set date for budget meeting work session. We talked about that before we passed our tour of the budget back in September. We had a regular question, council and lots of probably should meet for a work session as a council to look at our, our budget. And our budget is due in December. We only have one council meeting in December, so we don't have a lot, that much time at this point, but, so here we want to consider, wouldn't it be a good day, time of day to meet for a work session?
Do you end of December or beginning of December? December 1 or December 3?
Do by the end of December. But generally, you only have the one.
And I know when Steve brought it up, you know, he was talking, he gets, talked a little bit of specifics about taking a look at the amount of liquor store savings account dollars and, you know, talking a little bit about how could that money be used and prioritize it to some extent too. So that would be one of the things we'd be looking at.
So what are your druthers, council? What, what, let's, what time are they?
Well, I, I also like to know, other than the liquor store fund balances and taking a look at that, what else would you want to try and accomplish there?
So we're looking at possibly two-hour block?
It might take that to talk about the liquor store funds, but then also talk about the final budget again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we're going to go through our budget, it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
I guess on the budget, you know, with all the projects we've got going on, maybe prioritize some of those things, whether one over another or however you want to do it, but just kind of take a look at the different projects that we've got going on and how we want to proceed in the years coming up because they're going to put some potentially good big impacts on all the citizens here.
It's always good to have a strategy. So council and lots, do you think there's any certain date or?
No, I wasn't thinking of any certain date, but I'd like, like one, one in the afternoon or 10:00 in the morning, something like that. Or maybe a two-hour block, so. That would be my preference.
We're looking mainly here than November.
There's been one on the, we're not passing anything.
No, no, no. No, you're just kind of prepping for whatever you guys are going to do, the first meeting in December.
First meeting in December.
So that's the meeting.
Yeah, the first meeting will vote on December 14th.
Unless we decide to have two meetings in December.
But we're already having the hearing on the 14th.
November 14th?
No, December 14th.
December 14th is the final, is the last council meeting. Two guys officially set the budget. You could meet the week before, you could meet a couple weeks before, whatever. A couple weeks before the conference.
With those time, I don't know what your guys' schedules are. I mean, I barely know my own schedule, so. But looking ahead, would some, would it afternoon or?
Afternoon is best for me.
Yeah, probably.
Probably. One, one is probably.
Two, would that be okay?
Three, something like that. Okay. What, a day?
Is there any different, uh, day difference it makes?
Thursdays is best for me, but.
If anyone Tuesday falls on the month.
About Thursday, November 18th, two is locked.
I don't think it.
How about the 11th?
Unless I don't go.
I think half my 11th.
That's Bethune Day.
Yeah.
How about the 23rd?
Thank you.
Danielle, what's, did you just break turkey?
Yes, I'll be here.
Danielle, why'd you pick it, Danielle?
I was going to go with the 18th, but that one didn't work.
What about the 4th?
Yeah, I, that's, that's.
I could just not go to the conference, Steve. It was a coalition conference, I was going to go down there on the 18th morning.
Can you be ready, honey?
What?
Can you be ready?
What day first best you can?
Thursday, Friday, Wednesdays, I think, Thursday, Wednesday. Some of the other Wednesdays.
How about the 12th?
Friday the 12th?
Yeah.
Friday the 12th.
Two? Two. Yeah.
The 12th of November?
I moved the grand donut.
Seven?
I moved a lot.
I moved a lot.
Oh, yeah. I'm very close.
Do you candy donuts at 2?
They're all.
Anybody can eat those.
They might get cheaper if they're almost day old.
So who, uh, who is, somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll move that we have a budget discussion on November 12th to 25th.
Okay. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Young, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same, motion carried.
I just want to mention, that full bid opening was at 1:00.
Oh.
Huh?
Oh, I said all.
That's not going to take an hour.
Oh, sure.
Not the open bid, we're looking at number, that won't take much.
It'll be out of here.
Council will.
Okay, I'd number 12. No, but not just going to present to us city council technology. Just FYI.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of get some input from council as far as the setup of this room. It's really, it's really not a great setup because what we have to show you guys is on the screen, but also it's on the public unless they're on Zoom and I show them everything. They may have a hard time seeing the screen because I've got to turn enough so that Steve can see it and I'm really tough to, depending on. So.
Let me back. Our old, our old scenario here, the screen, it was tough to see it then and it's tough to see it now.
Yeah.
The, the writing on there.
Unless you zoom that way up, it's.
I can't see that.
I have.
Okay, so, so one of, one of the thoughts is, um, it'd be great to have this thing, obviously for the general public, but to have it over against the wall on either side. And originally, one of the things we've been thinking about is, is moving that camera over to this corner because then when people come in, they don't walk in front of the camera. So, so having it over here, you know, it'd be less intrusive anyway with the camera goes. But that was just one part of it. To put the screen, if the camera's over here, put the screen against that wall. Danielle and I would also move over to that side because obviously I have to connect up to it. But, but the other thing that we're thinking about, your, your tablets are old, they're outdated, they need to be basically turned in and need to figure out something to it. But my question for you guys is, what would you like in place of them? I know some of you guys use them to look at the packets, some of you don't use them at all, but, you know, they have systems out there and I, I'd have to look into it. But some type of a system that whatever I'm showing on there, you guys are also picking up on monitors right in front of you. So it could be a, you know, a 21-inch monitor in front of each one of you guys that, that you're able to zoom in on, to be able to see it a lot better. I don't, I don't know what the system would be.
Would have to be that big?
Well, it wouldn't all, wouldn't have to be, but, you know, actually, if we could, instead of the tablets, the 10-inch tablets, maybe it's 12-inch or 14-inch iPad, I don't know.
I would suggest, iPad, if you don't go with the permanent monitor thing. And if you go with the permanent monitor thing, then I would like thirty months to have a complete print.
Well, that's the other thing we talked about. If we go to a system where, because you guys, some of you use them to see the packets and some of you don't, and if we went to a system, because I don't, I don't scroll through the packet.
Like, you don't, I do.
But yeah, so, so we might have to go back to paper packets for you guys unless the system, unless, you know, if it was a, if we got 12 or 14-inch iPads or newer tablets and, and, and somehow were able to see what I'm showing on the screen right in front of you and we could. right in front of you and you could zoom in on it. You know, there might, there is a possibility or capability, then you could take your existing one and be used to scroll through the packet and still use that too.
Right.
Taking into a combination of the two? We would each need a 21-inch monitor, but if we can put a monitor, you know, I could look at one.
Sure.
Is there such a thing out there?
And then these?
Or when these look into, that's way more electronically savvy than me.
Than all of you.
Can we connect an iPad to this system somehow, wirelessly?
That's what I.
I mean, just about everything has that capability these days, but I don't know.
That's what I need to look into and investigate a little bit, because there's some way of, of, if we're all, you think if we're all on the same Wi-Fi network, and we're all basically looking at the same thing, we should be able to. Now, I don't, I don't Wi-Fi this stuff to this, I connect a hardwired to it, but there is the capability to, um, wirelessly, and I don't know if it works because of our speeds, but it works real well, I can basically just put on my screen here and it shows up on there by sharing it to it without the wires. But I don't know how you would do that, every device in the room, without everybody going to some, and maybe that's it, everybody logs into some.
To a link like we did with all the meetings for a while? You know, but just to a private.
Yeah, whether it's an IP address or something, I don't know, right? I'd have to get somebody that knows a whole lot more about this than me.
Then would that, would there be any over-meeting?
As long as you're working.
No, because we're.
Still posted meeting.
We're all talking, you're at a meeting and showing it all at a meeting.
And still posted meeting no matter what?
And still post, yeah, I don't.
You could still run that same thing that we'd be seeing on our screens for the public, you know?
Well, somehow that's the system it would have to be, because they would look at it on here. And you guys would see it.
It shouldn't include the option of us being able to communicate.
No, 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 it's just, it's just a way for you guys to read the presentations in the packet in the council chambers during the council.
Just like that, I'll do the packet now, but digitally, be the same exact thing.
Yeah.
What's on that screen would be on my screen instead of me catching up.
Right. You know, if, you know, Microsoft has them surface pros, it could be a 17-inch laptop in front of you, whatever would work so that you guys can pick up the same thing I'm doing. Now, if you, well, Zoom does it. If everybody had a laptop and everybody connected to Zoom, and I went through the packet and everything was Zoom, but, and with a 17-inch laptop, you could actually have Zoom, you could be on Zoom and looking at what I'm zooming, and on the other half of the screen, you could be, you could have the packet. The only thing is, if you want to zoom in on one or see something, that makes it a little bit more difficult, but, because you could split the screen and have your packet on one side and what I'm zooming on the other side.
So if this was interconnected, wouldn't we all be on the same page, or couldn't we go to different pages?
No, you'd be, because you'd be opening up basically.
Or you might be mirroring that.
You would mirror that, the Zoom, the Zoom option, I was saying, the Zoom, you'd all mirror what's there on Zoom. But what you would do for the second half is you'd just open a PDF of the, of the packet, you could scroll as you want to through the, through the packet individually.
Okay.
But that's, again, that's taking up, you know, 17-inch monitor, if you wanted to really look at something, I don't know if you could see it, if you wanted to zoom in on what I'm showing, I don't know, you can't do that. I'd have to do it, and I try to, but you'd, you'd be, you'd be looking at what I'm zooming into on a laptop, for instance, 17-inch laptop, as opposed to, um, you know, trying to see it on there, it'd be right in front of you. I know, it's just, it's kind of, it's kind of goofy, um, trying to do it technology-wise so that it works, other than having a, uh, you know, a movie projector hanging on the wall, which.
There's nothing like paper, right?
Well, that's why, that's why I thought if we could, if we did maybe 17-inch monitors and make sure that everybody hooks up to, um, or is able to see what I'm displaying right on a monitor right in front of you, and then this goes to the public, and then give a feedback and give everybody packets.
Yeah, seems like the most efficient route. Just because I have no idea what else is out there, they can talk to him.
Have you heard any, or gotten any feedback about how they can hear us with public microphones?
No, but that was the other thing I wanted to bring up was, is, is, haven't, haven't had any comments, but I do know that having, for, for that video, having that as the only microphone in the center of the room, as long as everybody's using their outdoor voice, not, and I'm not using an outdoor voice, I just naturally, I think I talk a little louder, but nobody has a problem hearing me talk with that microphone sitting right there. And obviously, everybody in the crowd that comes up to speak is right in front of you. It's how much does it pick you guys up? It picks you guys up pretty well. I know that when Mindat was here at that one meeting, and I was, I was a little bit concerned about, one of them was really talking very low, whether they'd be able to pick them up, and it, and, but when you're, when you're watching it on, on your computer after the fact that it's been uploaded, you can adjust the volume up or down as you need to and you can hear it. But that's not enough ultimately. So the other thing that we really need to think about in this system is putting drop mics in. Instead of those things right in front of you, I would just like to talk to somebody about actually, you know, putting maybe six or maybe it's just three drop mics down the center of the room and that'd be all, it just, they could just hang it down a little bit from the ceiling, and I think that would work.
I, I had had one comment, and I can't recall if it was because they were watching it on TV or on the internet, but they said, when we spoke up here, a lot of times, it seemed like there was a lot of background noise and hard to determine the voice, or to make the voice out.
That was working when you guys had, that was some of the concern or some of the comments when you guys had the mic right in front of you, because you all had them at different, different distances, and some of you would speak and you'd be fine, and some of you would talk and it would be garbled. And I don't know if it was because you were too far away or too close, because of those, you were too close is the issue, because of the type of mics they were. So some of you, you were very clear to understand, some of you it's kind of scratchy or grain when you talk. But that's, I don't think that's the case now, that's been learned out of there. Um, but you are ways away from that, so it just depends on how loud you talk. So if you have an opportunity after this meeting, when this one gets posted on the YouTube channel, go and listen to it, just, you know, run through it real quickly, just shoot through it just to see how you pick yourselves up, or how you, how you hear yourself, or how you hear each other on YouTube, which will be up tomorrow sometime. But I had a phone, I'm sure.
One thing I liked about the idea is getting a packet, rather than having a mess of a whole bunch of papers to hand up, just throwing them all in. I like that, except, with a couple of exceptions, I like having a budget printed out, because I don't want to write things on it, etc., etc. With the exception of, you know, there's a couple of things I like getting it on, yes, because the video scroll through and the video read on that, so.
And you still could, I mean, you have that, it works.
Yeah.
You know, we could get laptops for this thing, and you could still, for those that wanted to, you could still, instead of getting papers, just use that tablet. And when that one jumps out, we'll have, probably have a spare here, another one, you know? And maybe that's what we use them for, for those that want to continue to read the packet that's small right in front of you. And you can zoom in on it, whatever you want to do.
I think we should keep it as simple as possible. When we start talking about hooking up to what you're doing, I mean, just, whatever you call that thing, right? So, I, and the layout is not good either.
It's not.
You know, when somebody comes up to speak to us, they can't see them, so, you know, that needs to be where the camera picks it up, and.
Well, in most council chambers, when somebody stands up to speak, unless you have a camera back from that angle and a camera from this angle, and somebody to switch them, you always are, you always have the shot from, you know, if you're facing the council and the person addressing the board or the council, you're getting their back anyway.
Yeah, but they got to be where you are, and then, you know, we can see them, they can see them, and the camera can't see them.
Well, sure, for sure, I mean, we could always basically, if the camera's over there and you put that, that camera would pick up somebody standing right here, you know, and, you know, facing that way, sure.
And that's not still an easy read on.
I agree. That, I think, was a smart move, because it allows more people, and granted, you know, there's not just 10 across the front, there could be more chairs. If we had this thing up against the wall, we could put the chairs, more chairs and line them up. The reason they're angled like that is, again, to try and allow you and the audience to see this the best they can. Anybody that basically is sitting at home sees it perfectly on Zoom, they don't even need this, because they do it on the computer. If you guys all logged into Zoom, this could be turned like this, and the audience could see it there, and you guys could pick it up on Zoom right in this room.
But that could be on the wall, the mic and podium could be, you know, right there.
But it's.
It can all be, you know.
Yep. And I can go through the packet on Zoom and switch off and on, that can be done. It's just you guys then, to see, to see what, you know, you'd have to bring the tablets in and actually hook up to Zoom to have them right in front of you.
Like we did during the, when we were doing that.
Yeah. When you first started.
We were always here, but.
Yeah. If you guys did that, then you'd see everything on the screen. The only thing different, and I kind of haven't done it, I haven't went through the packet on Zoom, because, you know, I would basically have one computer that has the packet, and I just scroll through the packet, and then whatever I want to, you know, jump over to, to show you additional what's on the packet, I would just share it on the screen with this computer and do that, and then go back to the packet, so you guys would always be able to see the packet, or you could do it individually, but you'd always be able to see what I'm showing if you all use the tablets and, and connect it to Zoom. I would just have to change what I do here a little bit, which can be done. The only reason I haven't been doing that is because you guys use them to see the packets and you don't connect to Zoom.
I like older, are they old tablets? Like, I use my old.
Yeah.
Steve uses his old. Are the older tablets updated enough to function with Zoom real good?
They do, but they, they're, they're, they're old, they need to be, they need to be.
I, I thought that when I used.
And that's why I thought.
It was pretty clumsy.
We need to get you guys new ones anyway, um, for future councils or whatever, but what would you rather have? Another tablet, a bigger tablet?
Are we?
iPad?
We have money to pay for this.
Well, we would, we would use that second pocket of, uh, ARC funds. I mean, we had, you know, we could use, like I said before, we could put all of that into the sewer fund, ensure the sewer fund up if we wanted to, that's an eligible expense. We could put the whole $230,000 into that, we wouldn't have, we'd have to raise rates, but, um, right away, but, but we can use it, and this isn't gonna be a major expense, but, you know, if we get to the point where we're putting drop mics and we're buying new iPads, I bet you we're not spending 20, 30 grand maybe.
Do you want to do a little more investigation on cost on that?
I can, but I would just rather, what I need to know is, our bold screen is too small, you know, because those are tents.
I would say these are, it's hard for me, I've sent a couple of videos on this, but I've started to type on it, to type on the screen, it's all.
Well, do they have?
Yeah, you can get these, I'm just gonna pipe the iPad for them.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Wireless, chargeable.
That must be a 10-inch.
Yeah.
So how much bigger would you want that for?
I'm perfectly fine with that, um, but the only reason I say iPad is how they don't want to learn something new. I already know how this works.
But if I had, if I had, if there were the keyboard attachment, it's rather than trying to type on the screen.
That's what I love about iPhones.
Touchscreen keyboard.
Right, yeah, no. So, so something, something with a keyboard attachment to it, iPad sounds like probably the wrong we should go. But, again, there are different sizes, and even though you use that, we could get a five of them anyway.
Well, then I'd leave that at home, I like to remote play with it right now. Right now, it's strictly this is what I use it for, and a couple of other business things, but also this just pops up if you ever did, and you can do the on-screen keypad, you know?
I know.
Carry it around.
I know Brian wants one of those for utilities, but.
I'm sure.
But the iPad stuff's expensive, you buy a cheap.
Yeah. Steve, you're not paying for it, taxpayers aren't paying for it.
Indirectly.
We're gonna use, well, we're gonna use those funds we got from federal government for COVID dollars.
Yeah, free money.
The free money is gonna buy them. But that's, so, so Kurt, that's probably a 10, do they have?
They have much bigger.
Well, a lot of them, much bigger.
Well, I think, do they have 16?
That's kidding.
Pretty big.
You got it.
This is not the biggest one, I didn't.
They don't get it too big, they would, they would see it.
I, I love this size, man, I'd buy my own, this one, it's perfect.
So what are we gonna do now? I can, I can look into pricing iPads, but I kind of like to know preferred sizes. I mean, is Kurt's big enough? You want something bigger, which means you got?
This is fine for me, this size.
12, 14. Okay, we'll look at 12 to 14 pricing iPads, with options for the, for the, we'll start there. We'll probably have more discussion.
Like, more. Why are you just in my favor?
Yeah, well, it's usually pretty handy.
Okay, any more discussion on this?
That's enough for now.
Okay, item number 13 is park board, community managing applying to the council and your cabinet, is there a motion to approve?
Ooh.
Second?
Yeah.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, sing about the same aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried, item number 14, industry report done.
Um, okay, since our last meeting, working with Danielle to set the agenda, I attended the Mindat monthly virtual meeting on the, on the street project. I also attended another virtual meeting regarding the street project. Central office down in St. Paul, they took the, the design that Ben done, and it was submitted to the central office, and the central office did a review and comment on it. And so there was another meeting that was, that they had with, with going over the comments. It was more about the design team, Mindat's design team, answering central office's questions on certain things. One of them, there was an example, the central office asked, why are you showing 10-foot rail parking and 12-foot drive lanes when our standard is 11-foot driveline and, you know, 9-foot? So they had to justify why they were looking at what they were looking at, and it was obviously the, because of the traffic. And I think the comments we've had, the conversations we've had regarding lower than 10 and 12. Also, Otterton County Emergency Management has been working on a hazard mitigation plan that they have to submit to FEMA and, um, the Department of Homeland Security. All counties have to have them, and they also have to incorporate all their cities within the county into this too. So every city in Otterton County has had to come up with a hazard mitigation plan. Um, and so, uh, myself and the mayor and Danielle, and at one point, I think Brian and Jeff and I was kind of, and Trevor, we had kind of talked about this at a department head meeting and kind of went through the survey that the county had, they had, they had some consultants to the U of M that were working with them on it, so we answered this, you know, uh, different types of hazards that we could potentially see, and we ranked, ranked them on high potential, medium, etc., and then, you know, how you try and mitigate those things. And at the end of the day, they come up with, with a report for the county that includes all the cities, and at some point, I think it'll be coming before the city council to look at too. So I attended a virtual meeting on that, um, so they could try and get that thing done. We also had our annual first aid training, that a lot of the staff, we do annually, a lot of staff attended that. I continue to work on personnel issues, which I don't think are gonna go away anytime soon. Um, there's probably two, well, other than the fact that we still need to hire somebody at city hall, the two main things that I, that keep me kind of occupied with that stuff. I reviewed the response that we got from the Bureau of Mediation Services as a result of the meeting we had at the library, and of course, their, their review was contact the league of Minnesota cities. So I contacted the league of Minnesota cities and I went over the same information with them, and then I reviewed this response from the league of Minnesota cities attorneys, which was basically contact your city attorney. So I contacted the city attorney, because they had shared information with her that they had got from us. And, um, so I contacted the city attorney and just to find out if she had reviewed the information and talked to the league, and I did get a response from her. response from her, um, sharp and sweet, that pretty much said, um, "She agrees with the League of Minnesota Cities that the library board has the authority to just call it and everything that they, they've been doing," because of their authority under the, okay. So I, I basically responded to Lindsay's email and I said, "I don't, I, I, I need to meet with you, you don't have all of the information." She doesn't understand the dilemma, and I don't think the, the League of Minnesota Cities Attorney explained the dilemma, because I don't think they got it from the Bureau of Mediation Services. So I'm gonna be setting up a meeting with Donning and meet with Lindsay a little bit and have, make sure that she understands, she might come up with the same opinion, which we don't agree with, I don't think, but, um, short of that, I don't know where we go, other than trying to get the Attorney General to give us an opinion on that, the rules. Because I still don't understand how, again, how the calls could be dealt with, um, and throw us all out of pay equity and we end up having to pay for it somehow. But, other than, other than doing something really dramatic that I'm not even gonna get into, um, anyway, I spent time, uh, looking at some more information over the wastewater plant's potential to take on leakage from our surrounding, um, landfills, I talked to the MPCA about it, uh, they're fine with us doing it, we're trying to set ourselves up in potentially a position where we could maybe try some, take some, it's a revenue stream for the wastewater plant or for the sewer utility, which would be great, um, and, uh, we'll kind of hear more about that as we get closer to doing it, because eventually, I think we're gonna probably wanna bring it forward to council and say, you know, we want you guys to approve it and, and we'll, at that point, we'll be looking at what the revenue streams are and all that type of thing, but we want to try it first because we want to make sure that before we go forward with it, it doesn't affect the parameters of our permit, we can only have so much in heavy metals and that type of thing, so, the MPCA said, "Yeah, go ahead and try it and see what it does," so. Also, I finally, you remember Rastusen was here, Representative, Rastusen was here and talked about that, that special fun pocket of money that's supposed to become rolling out and, and it would be a perfect fit for the pool. Well, it did roll out, and I think it is a perfect fit for the pool, and so I talked to Amy King and Kate Martinez, and the three of us are gonna start working on that, that grant application. It's tall, it's called the Targeted Community Capital Grant, and it's one point five million dollars, it's tied to, um, communities and projects exactly like we're trying to do. It's, it's, you know, with the diversity in our community, the low income in our community, the fact that we're an opportunity zone, so, um, there's a pre-risk assessment sheet that, that I'm filling out, now it has to be filled out, but, um, then, then, um, we submit that and then start working on the full application. I think it's due in, towards the middle or end of November, um, and then you hear who's awarded the one point five million dollar request by the end of January. So, you know, obviously, we'll know the bid number, um, we still have the, the issue with having to, you know, rebid it, but the question would be, would the contractor that has the low bid, would they be interested in holding their bid until we hear from the state on that, on that, on that grant possibility? That's the question that we'll have to ask once the bids rolled in, through the design intent, the contract could say no for it.
Is it possible to double dip on that, if the grant had the funding, or they didn't want to be in it?
Well, one of them, well, um, I'm all, I kind of, I'm leaning for it probably not because unless, because typically, you can't incur any costs prior to the bond money being awarded, so that bond money is not gonna be awarded until, you know, May, June, if they go to special session, it could be even later. So by the time that gets approved and then we go through getting the paperwork all signed up, which could take another month, month and a half, we might not have a, a signed agreement with the state until potentially end of summer, so, um, that means we would definitely have to go, go for a rebid, uh, which is, which is, it's, it's not out of the realm of possibilities, because if we get this first grant, if we are approved for one point five million, we've got three years to spend. That was one of the things in there, you know, usually, you know, you get it allocated and you better start spending, you have to have it all spent within a certain amount of time, and it's not like it's six months, there's, there's two, three years in there that we would have to spend. The question would be, and I know one of the questions on the assessment form that I'm, that I'm filling out now is, do you have other state dollars already been allocated towards this project? Well, I can honestly say no, because the state hasn't given us any bond money.
And they aren't agreeable, that makes it two.
We'll, we'll see.
So they said on their, I mean, themselves prior to this?
Prior to, but they also, the state's been known to, when, once you get them to come up and look at a project and tour a project, things change, and I think, I think they, they received this project very well, and I think, I think they can, because of our demographics and everything else, I think they can basically say Pelican's different than other places, that we typically haven't given pools to, for, um, or funded pools for, and that comes to, to speak of, you know, our diversity, the fact that we're fifty-seven percent non-white, that type of stuff really hit home, I think, with them, but, but still, what's the probability, who knows, but, so, it, there may be possibly, because we don't have to spend the first dollars, but then the other part of it is, um, when we start testifying before the House Committee about getting those dollars and they ask us, "Okay, where are all your revenue sources coming from?" You can't lie to them and say, "Well, we got this, we didn't get this million and a half," you know, so they might see that, "Ew, I don't have a need for anymore."
Do the, are there still prevailing wage ties to that grant?
Yes. If we take that grant, it's prevailing wage.
Prevalent, yeah, any time it's prevalent.
But see, that, that's the other component of it too, because you open them bids, and we know we have to pay prevailing wages, and say it's five million dollars, okay, then the question would be, if we get this million and a half, we're still a million short, you know, so then, or maybe not a million, maybe it's a half a million, then would the state, through the bonding, instead of giving us a million and a half, would they give us the half a million? That's something that could be proposed, because, you know, they, they don't necessarily need to give you everything you asked for, the hundred, the one point five million, they could give you less. Usually, if it's in the language that you want, one and a half, that's what they give you, but if somehow, through Rastusen, who's on the Capitol House Committee, um, if he could change, you know, revise, they always do language revisions while they're looking on this stuff, they could always maybe do a, a, another draft or revision of that language, drop it down to five hundred thousand to give this other one, that's a potential. So, maybe, it's a lot of monkey business, but it's possible, I guess. But we need to see if we can get the million and a half, because that's more of a shoe in the nation we're gonna get from the project. Um, okay, so I, I'm working on that thing, um, I attended the Community Collaborative Fourth Quarter Meeting that we have, that we did that magazine for, I attended the October twenty Diploin Commission, and I reviewed the, the dam and bridge abutment information. I got a written document from engineers now, and I'm trying to coordinate a meeting with Dam Safety to see if we could use some of that money that we already got for engineering of the dam, to fix the dam, if we can use some of that to actually pay for the engineering to put the abutments in that the bridge would go on, so that way, potentially, the abutments could be done with a dam project, dam's being taken out, so when the dam's done, the abutments are in, all we have to worry about is the bridge, and hopefully, they'll allow us to use some of that money to engineer the abutments, uh, as part of the bridge removal, so that part will be done, you won't have to worry about that, and that'll reduce the amount of money we have to come up with to actually get the bridge, you know, buy the bridge and put it on, because the abutments will already be done. So-
We know it can be.
Yeah, it, it could be huge if they'll do it, so the, the, the document I got from the engineer was along the lines of, these abutments are needed to shore up the walls of where the, where the new, uh, river's gonna flow through, you know, it's, you know, quite a, quite a space, but the abutments will help support it, to shore it up from washout or whatever. So that's my report.
Thanks, Don.
I wouldn't say in Jordan's name, really wrong.
Jordan?
Jordan. You thought it was Rastusen? So did I.
What did I say?
Rastusen.
Rastusen?
Maybe I'm-
Is that on Holly Dugan?
So, what is this, what is the bridge engineering, the abutment engineering, does that have to be included in the VNRs plan for engineering?
It will, it will be, but, um, these funds may cover it, and whatever, we'll just have to figure out how much of that engineering is that portion of it, but those funds will cover it, however, we have to pay fifty percent of those funds, so it'll still save us a ton of money.
Okay, thank you. I don't know fifteen mayors before, no choice, it's likely.
Oh, my word.
What?
Just say giddyow, let's go home.
I attended the two, uh, twenty twenty-four Complete Street Project meetings on October twenty-fourth and twentieth, also conducted a tele, telephone interview with Mike LaFille in the form regarding that project, took part in a two-hour Local Foods, Local Places walking tour on Saturday, October sixteenth, around Pelican, those people from, uh, Morris, Little Falls, Ferguson Falls, and Pelican Rapids here to look at what we're doing with that entrepreneurship. Contra Schall, also with Local Foods, Local Places here, committee meeting, and that administrator sold up yesterday to review the agenda for this evening's council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing no other business, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Motion second, all in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Both the same? Meeting adjourned.